Part of the agenda, consent agenda. Consent agenda is the grouping of administrative matters that the board has to consider as part of our duties. They are sent to the board ahead of time and then we're allowed by opportunity to give questions to the administration. Prior to voting on this entire act. I was not able to make it to the. Now I see the invitation here to the. Deputy Committee for the Association was proposed to be. Tiring out.
Presentations tonight, John. Start off with our opening act. That's quite sure how it's going to be for an opening act, but I do have two policies for first read tonight in front of the board. First policy is seven three one three suspension of students. This policy really just has some minor revisions. It's a change to adopt some language from the Code of Conduct regarding appeals during. Some investigation last year, our attorney noted that there was a discrepancy between the. Between the policy and the Code of Conduct. So by adopting language directly from the code into the policy, it clarifies that there is a ten day. Appeal timeframe from the decision to get from the principals. Suspension to get it to the superintendent and then additional ten days after the superintendent makes a decision to appeal it to the board. For a short term suspension and then for a long term suspension, it clarifies the difference. Business days to appeal from the superintendent's decision of the board. So the law allows for. A essentially what they call exhaustion of remedies. In this case, it says it has to go to the board before it can go to the Commissioner of Education. So we need to lay out the timeframes so that every student and family is aware of what those timeframes are and. They do are will get notice of those timeframes in the letters as well, but this clears up discrepancy between the policy and the Code of Conduct. Next up, this one's a little more involved. This is Workplace Violence Prevention Program. So around October, the governor signed legislation which extended the Workplace Violence Prevention Act to school districts. It first went into coverage of private sector businesses back in 2006, I believe. But this extension to school districts brings with it a number of steps and a very accelerated timeframe. For getting it in place. So I'll go through the steps to completion first quickly. But first up, we have to develop a written policy statement. So we have a work group that's put together that we were working on a policy statement. Then there was a webinar, joint webinar between DOL Department of Labor and SED. And in that webinar, they announced that districts need to have a board policy as opposed to a policy statement. So the policy statement, much simpler, which is what Department of Labor will be looking for. However, SED is saying that we need to have a board policy, hence a draft policy in front of you today. This lays out the goals, objectives, employee participation, contact information at the policy statement, but that would also be contained within the board policy as well. Then we must conduct an internal risk assessment. Essentially looking at records of workplace violence or workplace injuries, assessment of administrative work risk factors such as rules. Or evaluation of the physical environment if we had someone carrying cash or making deposits late at night to a bank drop. Location which some private businesses may have. Those are examples that were put forth by the Department of Labor, which we don't necessarily have here.
So to do this assessment, so how extensive are they looking? From state edge in terms of the time and energy and expense that they're looking for us to put into it?
So they have sample forms prepared by the Department of Labor because the law has been in place for a while. So the the guidance has been there for private sector businesses and there are sample assessment forms. Myself and Chris Mears and Jamie Liss have been working together, have a sample form that we're going to use. And then Chris and I are going to meet with the building level safety teams to have discussion with them. It could touch on anything from the classroom, the parking lot to the lighting outside. Anything to do with the work environment and your work location. So the sample form that we have, it's about two pages, two and a half pages of different questions, whether that is an issue or not. But there will also be opportunity as the last bullet point there, there is mandated employee representative participation. So we will still be listening to what they have to say and they may bring up other issues that we had not thought of. And then try to incorporate those into the document itself. So how, I've heard differing levels of how much time. Organizations are putting into getting this off the ground. Our effort of meeting with the building level safety teams accomplishes the. Task of getting the employee representation, we still have to go reach out to say the transportation unit, the mechanics, the grounds crew. Because their work locations are not part of those building level teams. But we do need to have employee representation, participation. But they don't really clarify how much that is. So we're trying to take a measured approach which gets gets that participation, but still allows us to try and comply with the timeframes. I'll show you what the timeframes are in just a second. Third up, develop the written program where we have to go through the risk factors that we took in during the risk assessment. Figure out ways to mitigate those. Risks as well as system to report incidents, lessen plan for employee training, plan for annual review, which we're going to use the safety committee to do. Annual review for that again will represent a department participation in the creation of the program. A incident reporting system as well as providing for annual employee training. The draft policy that I have in front of you outlines all of these aspects. But here are the timeframes. So the law was in effect as of January fourth, it happened very quickly. Around beginning of January, DOL came out and provided additional compliance dates, which they say. They didn't really give additional comments. SED said we could use a good, make a good faith effort to comply with the policy statement requirement. But at the same time, they were telling us it had to be a board policy as opposed to a policy statement. So. We are, yes, Chris and I talked today, we're going to, we're reaching out to the building level teams to make, to find out when their meetings are so we can jump in on those. I've already started working on, I've already started working on the plan itself from a documentation standpoint. So that we can have it mostly done and. Take the feedback from the risk assessment, put it into that and then get that back in front of groups so that they can have their representatives take a look at it so we can get additional feedback.
So between the building planning teams, the safety committee and just general good practice within the district. How much more things do we have to invent here to comply with this now?
Just those five things. You used the word more, so I'm. It is, we have a really good shot at complying with it because the May third is the ultimate date for compliance. And they, and they're saying that you can't even, an employee can't even file a complaint until after that date. So that gives us sufficient time, I feel, to get all of these components put together. Because we've already worked on a reporting incident form, we're working on the assessment, getting that done. And we have a really good shot at getting this all complete by the May third date. But then we'll be rolling into the annual review for next year and.
Is there anything that we're doing now that we can stop doing as part of rolling in this whole process?
Not necessarily, really, we were talking about using, at one point, using the. The confidential tip line as a reporting mechanism. But the regulation is very specific on what needs to be pulled into that report. So it doesn't even get us what we need there, nor does the workplace accident report, which is, which some are looking at using. Because that doesn't necessarily cover all of the data that the regulation requires us to have. So, yes, so. We brought this forth with the idea of having a second read on February twenty seventh. I know over the weekend, I got a number of questions about what the real interplay with this is going to be with respect to. Student supervision, student discipline, how that's going to work out. I mean, I wouldn't say there was an audible gasp when, when attorneys announced that. DOL was taking the position that this would apply to classrooms essentially and student supervision, but no one really had ideas of how that would play out. Because this whole program is governed by an arm of the Department of Labor, PASH, the Public Employee Safety and Health Division. So because it's governed by someone other than SED. I don't know yet know how they're going to rule on whether something is a risky situation and not a risky situation, a normal situation for.
I think I'll tell the board, so you know, when I took a look at this policy and now I'm, when you say an audible gasp, I guess that that's, I'm glad that I wasn't totally off the mark. Like you've taken a policy that was written, you know, for more private business. I mean, if you have a convenience store where you have a lockbox or you're issues with lighting, that's very different than if you were applying it to a school building where you have students. And especially if you're looking at things like aggressive behavior. Right? Because that's what you're talking about here. So how does that play out with students who have exhibited aggressive behavior towards teachers? Or if it is, there's no indication here, if it's a student with a disability who's demonstrating behavior. And then how does that then play with student discipline? Because now it's a workplace violence issue or can it be, but there's no guidance to follow that as a, yeah, am I right to say that?
Not that I've seen.
Right, so. I did have a lot of questions. Now, the thing is that we have to have this be a policy by media timeline. But I think as we, there really has to be some conversation, not just Spencer's board, but this is like a large conversation about then how does this then? Impact schools when you're, you're dealing with a whole different client cell, right? Like it's not, you're not a retailer where somebody comes in and there's a violent act. And does that, and will that have any effect on discipline or liability of the district? You know, if. Can a teacher say like, no, like this is, this is workplace violence, I have a student who's been aggressive. I don't want them in my classroom. You don't know how all those situations play out yet. So there were, I did have a ton of questions. I don't know if we have any good answers in terms of moving forward, so.
Is there any pushback going on from like the superintendent's association, stuff like that to say, hold on, you know? Big timeout?
And tomorrow's labor relations. Focusing on this very topic. When we started working on this, we started working on a policy statement because that's not necessarily what approved, it's a position statement. And we would always afford any sort of violence happening in the workplace. However, by making it a board policy before we necessarily have any answers. We are complying with the timeline and we're limited to what's contained there in the regulation that what G R one has put into the draft policy. But then I have to come back in front of you each time we want to make changes to it. So this is right for tonight, for this one, definitely a true first read. This is feedback, let's see, we see what happens, but I will be back in front of you at some point to try and get this. Something approved because we have to make a good faith effort at complying with that policy statement requirement. If nothing else, after May third, that is when DOL says they will, they said, they, they said they will be looking for the policy statement. They didn't say they wouldn't care about the policy, board policy. The board policy requirement is coming from SED's Office of Counsel, not necessarily from Department of Labor, who is the enforcer of this.
So policy statements, we could go fairly generic, big picture, wide open.
Department of Labor provided a sample policy statement that we could use. We already had it drafted. So, but it's, it's kind of a, what are you looking for, how far do we go with this, do we wait for more answers?
Well, to the latest point, I, we don't want to be putting in place a board policy that has so many open questions to it. That it's, it becomes really just not workable. I mean, our, I think our position maybe is, let's get this broad policy statement for DOL done. And then kind of follow where this goes with the rest of the state, quite frankly, how they put together this policy. I'm sure G R one put together something very as an initial step, but I'm guessing we're going to be able to punch holes in it with lots and lots of questions.
Yeah, it's six pages, it basically takes the regulation, puts it out into a broad based policy. It's nothing we wouldn't have to comply with anyway.
Right.
Because it's a law.
Right. You know, my, you know, the concern is then how does that policy then impact other issues? You know, I mean, you're certainly not addressing. You know, a student, an aggressive student issue with things like drop safes or posting signage about limited cash on hand, which are the action steps, you know? So I think we just have to. Think that, think it through. I mean, this isn't, there's nothing in this policy where you'd be like, oh my God, we absolutely can't do that. I just don't know what the implications are of then having a policy that says that you, if there's this violence, you know, if this is now, I mean. Obviously, nobody supports workplace violence, like clear, it's not like you didn't know this policy, everybody like, oh yeah, we're fine with that. You know, but it's a matter of then how does that impact, you know, discipline decisions or. School, I feel like I don't have the answer to that, so.
Has, has G R one or anybody else done kind of that crosswalk against other parts of how a district operates?
Nothing.
Student discipline and things like that?
I think that we're trying to catch up.
Just still trying to catch up, okay, so, all right.
All right, so thank you for the feedback. First read for both of these policies.
Is the other, the other one's coming back to us though, right? Are they both coming back to us?
If, if we leave with just for a tweet tonight, then I would bring both of them back.
Okay, thanks, John.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Jonathan. I'd like to now welcome our Director of Technology, Dr. McFarland, and then our two network experts, Paul Benhorn and Sir Steve Pickens.
Couple of switch over to technology, so hopefully this all. So we're here tonight to just give you a quick update about our cybersecurity from the standpoint of our team here. So I have Steve and I have Mr. Paul Benhorn here with me. They will be doing the heavier lifting of this part of the presentation, but we want you to be as enthusiastic about cybersecurity and cyber safety as we are. So we're going to start out by playing a little game with all of you for just a couple of seconds, so bear with me. Because one of the things that I've always found is if we keep it exciting and interesting, our remembering of things would come to mind a little bit quicker.
Is Steve Harvey coming?
No, unfortunately, they only have me as your fine host. So what we would like to do is just, we know that this presentation has been done a couple of years now. Also, we want to dig back into your Wayback Machine and see what you already remember about EDL two D and privacy and security. So with that said, we are going to top five answers on the board. Here's your question. How many people were surveyed? What is something you all remembered about EDL two D and data privacy? I'll give you a couple of seconds to think. If you have an answer, you can raise your hand.
One Megan, you got one.
Megan! What would you, what, what do you think, what do you think? Top five answers are on the board. There's really no wrong answer if you're going to hear about it. Heard this before, so I guarantee you'll have something in mind.
Okay. P I I.
P I I, she says, okay, survey says. Well then, we got to get, we have to have the whole thing here. Survey says data protection. Aligning of DPO data, our friend Steve, our data protection officer, EDL two D aims to protect personally identified information, P I I of students and staff in educational institutions. So that was the number one answer, so you all win to the family feud of EDL two D facts. We'll go through a couple of others that you may have been thinking of as you remember. Paul, you want to grab those for me? We have disclosure restrictions, remember it imposes restrictions on disclosure of students' data to third parties. So we have to make sure that our data is safe and not be given out to other third parties. To do that, we have security measures, so we have a safeguard for student data and annual employee training, which continues as. My friend Steve here will talk a little bit about a continuous training that we've been doing this year. Along as well as those third party contracts. So those third party contracts always include some of the web tools that we use and some of the other computerized tools, frontline, wind cap. We have to get those third party agreements that they will keep and hold safe our data and we don't have any privacy issues. We'll talk very quickly a little bit tonight about that NIST framework, if you can't remember what that stands for, we'll bring you up to speed once again. That data breach response, so we have to have response if in fact we are a part of a data breach. And then really that last one, that most important one, the parental rights. So parental rights have the access to review and correct their child's information and educational records. All part of EDL two D. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Steve and Paul, who are going to talk about, and this is just a one pager of all of the things we just said, so a nice little visual remembering.
What does two D stand for, there's just a code. Just how it's broken down.
And so I'm going to turn it over to Steve right now, he's going to talk. Or Paul, right? Paul's going to go first.
So going over, we have EDL two D frameworks, we'll be going briefly into what we've been working with SARA. Some of the phishing training as well as future plans. This is your reminder for NIST and EDL two D, very familiar, you hear different identify, protect, hack, respond and recover from the reminder.
In the fall, we started our partnership with SARA. We started with their managed SOC service, which allows them to monitor our equipment, to monitor our network for anything that may be happening on that. Some success with minor little things. We also engaged with their Chief Information Security Officer, CISO, virtual CISO services that they have. And we've been going through a lot of. Different gap of assessments using the CISA CFS framework to go through different items to address and to help. Improve our security posture. These are the, this is a thirteen pillars, the ones in white are the ones that we are mostly focusing on this year, that we have the most. Items to, to look at and do, very first one is policies and procedures. That's always something to work on is a policy to do something, procedure, more of a return or for, for those of you that want a different word for it, guideline for us to go by. So these are the different sections that we've worked on with them.
So here you, a lot of you are CC'd in on some of our phishing tests and get them yourselves. These are the results that you see for September, October, December and January, which also ended up coming out towards the beginning of February. For the most part, we're doing pretty good. The January one was the one that we ended up getting the most, so we are continuing to send those out and. And there's going to be more in the future. And as always, we also have our tech tips. And during Cybersecurity Month, we had some more little educational trainings as well, so. Uh, this is just a little brief, you've seen a lot of these, seventy-one staff members click on the links. Thirty-two actually put in their usernames or passwords, so. Uh, that is, we try to get that number as low as we can and just throwing in more and more of these to try and get that number to get lower.
Are you seeing that go down?
Yep, it's been going down. It's, it all depends on which one I end up sending out. Some of them I get significantly less, some of them I get more. So it all depends on the day. The sixty reported is really what we're going for, is to get people to notice that it is phishing and the, you know, send it our way. Or even make a ticket or anything along those lines.
Yeah, anecdotally, it seems like, I mean, when you send the days, it looked like it was going down, I just didn't know that it was just like.
Yeah. No, a lot of them have been going down, yes, yeah. Yeah. So moving forward, we are currently evaluating, there we go. We are updating the password policy for the district that is going to be getting increased to sixteen characters with complexity. We will not be able to reuse the last ten passwords. However, we will not have to change your password yet. Uh, that is in guidelines with the updated NIST frameworks as well as CISA. So it is a longer one. We are calling this the pass phrase policy as phrases is the way they go for making it easier to remember longer passwords. Throw in a number, you throw in a symbol, and away you go. So that one is going through. Uh, we will be implementing that in the fall. That'll be September, the second week after school starts. Uh, we are evaluating alternatives for content filtering and classroom management systems, uh, due to some problems with the current filter. And so we're currently bringing up group of concepts with them right now. And we will have more of that towards the end of the year as we continue to work with our current filtering solution. And finally, we are also continuing to explore managed security providers along with Sadara as well as Spawders that other districts and counties use. And just taking a look at seeing what lines up with us as well as different potential offerings. So we're continuing to work on that.
So questions? Yeah, real quick, um, I noticed you mentioned something about this. Is Sadara doing actual, like, without notice to y'all probes on our systems and trying to get through different pieces besides your phishing exercises?
We, so we also work with CISA directly to have them probe our external addresses. And we get whether it's monthly or weekly, weekly reports on my line. So we are having our external addresses continuously probed and we get reports for that every week.
But to answer your question, no, Sadara is not. No, Sadara is not doing that for us. Uh, we do not extract that service. But we are doing that ourselves to do some probes. Do some analysis of our security posture.
Is there a, a need or desire to take it up a higher level to ensure that we're really got the walls up?
So that's why we're, we're looking at some of our other, some of the other providers that are out there, they have a broader net. They're reaching out and doing some of those penetration testing that reaches just beyond the levels of even K-12 education. But they have some governmental contracts that they also pull from, so they have some, a higher reach and a higher stretch for more data breaches than just what we're familiar with lately in K-12. So that is one of the reasons too, we're looking at some of these other providers, because they are bringing in some of the more cutting-edge ability to, to find these bad actors that are getting smarter by the moment, for sure.
So I'll ask a question. Passwords, are they prompted, uh, expedited months to redo them, or is it good for all year? How's it work?
The new filter will be, once you set it, you're done.
It's good.
You don't need to change it.
Ever.
Unless there's an issue.
Okay. My district every like three months, it's such a.
Right now, we, it's, it's first step, it's every six months that they need to do it.
Okay.
But this is a change to make it a one-time, because it's a long, complex password.
So walk the dogs.
Hundred two, hundred two characters and hundred two. So that's one.
Don't use them.
Yeah. They've also been going to it more for everyone who ends up making a super long, uh, complex password that's a write-down. So by going to, trying to make it something that's also easy to remember, but one that you're less likely to write down while still being secure.
Because you're not having to change it.
Yeah.
You mean, I should have my password code book next to my computer?
Does this password?
Well, you can put it in your, you can put it in a safe box. Definitely not under the keyboard, though.
Right.
Just questions? All right, thank you all for, appreciate it.
Well, thanks for pointing.
If you better have something, there is something. Count the pressure.
What game show are you going to use?
I was just going to say, not to be outdone by technology, we're going to play a game of Jeopardy. Just kidding. Any questions, any, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. For five hundred.
So as Paul loads up, um, this is going to be a five-hundred thousand-foot look at where we are today. Uh, these numbers, and it's really high, it's really high, yes. These numbers will change, I guarantee it. Uh, but we're just going to run through all of them. So, uh, right now, our real property tax is based on the current information I have using the maximum allowable value. Okay, I just received information today from financial advisor, so that value may change. We'll see what that is at our next meeting. Um, but again, I put in the maximum allowable, just to share with you, um, what that may look like. Okay, obviously, we have a lot of work to do with regard to what the impact is on the tax rate based on the assessments and the change in utilization rates. Ten ninety-nine other tax items is our pilot payment of the tax, that's a set number. Our next is inter economy sales tax. Um, I thought we had a pretty good budget focus group session. A lot of the things we really talked about on the local sources, I had the group go in and do. Um, based on their estimates, as of right now, I put in four point four million. Okay. Uh, the budget focus group range from, I think, four up to five point two million. So, um, we'll continue to look at this, it'll be helpful once we get our second payment, see where we're at compared to last year. The next item, um, you know, of money at property. What we're really seeing is an increase right now in interest income. We will see at the next financial, monthly financial report, our interest income right now is, I wonder, about five hundred thousand dollars, which is fantastic. Most difficult, managing that cash flow and investing it appropriately. Um, so you're seeing, um, an increase in there, and then you're also seeing just a slight increase in MOC's rental. The agreements based on their move from out of district promise, with the drop of the pilot. But you can some come off. Yeah, but Amazon is, is in there as your guest. Uh, the next, sale of property compensation for loss. Uh, this will be an interesting one, I'm still evaluating it, something I'll continue to have conversations with our financial advisor. Uh, what Chris Nichols, our head mechanic, has identified. Normally what happens is we have our boss who work with the, uh, the vendor, and they give us a particular trading value. It's anywhere depending upon the bus, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars. If we can go out for public auction or for sale, he's saying that it's going to be probably close to twenty dollars per bus. What I'm evaluating is the impact on overall aid. Um, I, I have a sense that that may lower our overall aid. Uh, so again, continue to look at that, but right now, that's what the plan is. Students for that to take that out to auction, public sale.
So you're saying only five thousand per bus, you get those five to ten thousand?
Depending upon the bus for a trade-in value.
That's a perfect, I'm just saying. Okay.
And the last one under, um, above those sources is miscellaneous, it compare your expense. Again, this was an interesting one, I'm curious to see what the, uh, the budget focus group has to say at our next meeting. But there's a lot of things in here that I really have no control over. As I mentioned throughout that meeting, we're, uh, the Mashburn surplus. Uh, you have prior year expense reimbursement for E-rate. You have a prior year expense for what they call the CTE. All things that are really out of my control. And they're, they're hit or miss sometimes. You also see in there a reimbursement for workers' costs, there's something else, you know, to pay, to be reimbursed. So again, I don't know a lot of those numbers, but as of right now, based on historical trends, um, I've increased it by fifty-five thousand dollars. So any questions on global sources for property tax? Okay, so that gets to saving. Governor came out with, um, for running. This is, uh, example of something that the New York State ASBO group put out. You can see in the Formula Three twenty-four column, that information is based on the reverse state aid output. That's really, uh, what we, what we're projected to get as of that point in time. You can see in the twenty-four, twenty-five column what the projected amount is. So the overall, you can see that right now, uh, the state aid deductio of like one hundred forty-one thousand. I just want to share, you're seeing a five hundred thousand dollar increase in the three K, that number did not increase. Okay, but that's also accounted for in the federal fund, so it's not really part of the state aid, uh, for the general fund purposes. Okay? So some of the changes that the governor has proposed as part of foundation, there's, there's two really. Um, one is sort of this, she's taking away the state harmless, or she's still telling the transition adjustment. For us, that did not impact us. The other change that there, that she's looking to implement is just going to try to smooth or look at a ten-year average of CPI versus looking at the prior year. So, um, what this is sharing with you is that had the formula running as it was supposed to, we were received thirty million, three hundred thousand. Based on the changes, we're going to get twenty-nine, nine. So against Ty's point, I think that's, that's the real conversation right now going on between legislators and governors. So what's happened is there are many districts, almost half, I think, that are being impacted by state harness in particular. So that's where, gives a lot of us an extra block, yeah, send it to some of the governor. So that being said, big picture, again, I, I shared this with the budget focus group, I just want to share with you. Historically speaking, when you compare the output report with what we actually receive, you can see that we are, the projections are very, very close. Couple of years, we'd actually been below. This year, we're performing a little bit better compared to the output report. A large part of that is because of transportation aid, again, share a little bit more with you at the next meeting. Uh, again, foundation here right now is based on the governor's report, last what they call a local deduct. Building aid is again, you know, based on debt service coming off of books, you'll see it. Normally, you would see a corresponding decrease on the expense side, but because we're going to be looking to do a borrowing for our current capital project, that's not going to happen as significantly as you may just think. Transportation aid, again, one of the ways transportation aid is determined is you take the prior year expense times the particular aid ratio. So for instance, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking at twenty-three, twenty-four expense. We haven't finished the twenty-three, twenty-four year, so what I've done is, I've taken what I think we're going to spend in the current year, multiply that times the aid ratio. So again, it's a little bit, uh, lower than what the governor had, so I'm projected four point one, still an increase over last year. MOC's aid, again, process is similar as far as how it's calculated, current year, times the aid ratio. Again, I'm taking a certain percentage, what I think we're going to spend, multiply that times the aid, still an increase overall compared to the prior year. Public and private access cost aid, again, that has allowed to do with us, where to request our MOCs and how we stack students. We attend, uh, private schools, MOCs and our self-contained programs. Again, the way they calculate that is they take certain assumptions and they use, uh, two to three years' old data. Uh, what I'm doing is looking at current year stacks, taking that value, reducing it, taking ninety percent of that and projecting what it would be. So that's what I've done here, still an increase. This next section is instructional material aid, it's all based on enrollment, I don't change those numbers. As but not least, you're seeing a large increase in student's program aid. The formula to calculate this, um, I have to go to, uh, certain city school, uh, documents. Um, I was shocked that what was occurring here, I did reach out to Questar, the state aid financial planning. I did not give them my calculation, and they came back with a number that was very similar. The reason for that change has to do with what's happening in changing foundation aid. There's a particular section within the law that allows what they call excess students, and that's what we're seeing in this particular year. So to me, that's a one-time influx of aid. So a big picture, I think, we saw from the governor's run, an actual decrease of aid, I'm actually projecting an increase. So yeah, that was, that's only five hundred thousand full. Oh, good. It's projected an increase compared to the governor's.
Great. Anything else? All right, so meeting evaluation. Good to go, so, you know, ready to, yeah, go on, move on?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
Could I have a second, please? Hey, neighbor, I don't know, all right, move into executive.